And we have a very special guest in our audience who is going to give us a, two very special guests, sorry. They are going to give us a legislative update, Representative Dylan Fernandez and Senator Julian Sear.
All right, Dylan went first at Rotary, so I'll go first now. Good evening, Julian Sear. Great to be with all of you folks. And also, we've got a semi-full audience. So Dylan and I have been on island today. We joined the Rotary Club for lunch. We got a tour of your gleaming new fire station, which should be the envy of, I think, every municipality. And had some meetings. I met today with some folks from Fair Winds talking about a mental health legislation we just passed. Actually, had a meeting with the Chamber. One of your board members and I have spent, I think, three meetings together today. The Nantucket Chamber convened a meeting of restaurateurs. We have a restaurant promotion commission that's looking at how to support restaurants. Actually, two of your select board members were there at that meeting. And then now, we're here with you folks. It is a busy time in the legislature. We are in like, the final five months of our two-year legislative sessions. So that means we've been very busy with a number of things we've gotten done. And there's a number of pieces to come, all before July 31st. Landmark education bill with significant changes to the Chapter 70 formula was signed into law this fall. Very, very significant. The big pieces for Nantucket are going to be increased dollars for English-language learners, which is very, which is huge for you guys. More resources around special education, social-emotional learning. Both of our chambers have taken up significant climate change policy. The Senate passed arguably the most expansive law in the, what would be the most expansive law in the country in January, putting the state on a target to get to net zero carbon emissions by 2050. And then Ivan personally has been spending a lot of time working on mental health legislation. Senate President Karen Spilka, her number-one personal priority is to see transformation of mental health. I've spent the last year about working on this issue. I'm the Senate Chair of the Joint Committee on Mental Health, Substance Use and Recovery. Just last Thursday, the Senate took up and passed a comprehensive piece of legislation that I was the primary author of. Pretty significant components around parity. So this is the, making sure that benefits for mental health are equivalent to benefits for medical, surgical, or physical health. Looking at how do we build workforce that we need for mental health and also access to care. There's a number of issues that are, that are going to make a big difference on Nantucket from increasing a new licensure level for mid-level practitioners, which will make a difference for services on the island, allowing for same-day billing. There's actually a chunk of language around how the Commonwealth offer, does procurements and procurements and contracts, that they have to take into account the needs of geographically isolated and rural communities. It just, you all know, it just costs so much more to do business here. That needs to be reflected in our contracting for these services. So it's a pretty significant piece of legislation. We're hopeful we can get it through the House. There's more to come, I expect. We'll be taking up, both chambers will be taking up legislation around housing, which this board has been awesome about. Dylan will talk a little bit more about how Nantucket sort of led the way here on this. And likely, transportation's going to be in the mix. Dylan and I are sort of working hard to make sure when we talk about transportation at the state level, people are just not thinking, you know, roads and bridges and sort of big freeways that are far off island, far off Cape, but that we're looking at water travel. Closer to home, we've been working on a number of pieces of legislation. The one piece that I want to talk about today is, it's Senate Bill 445 and House Bill, House Bill 777. This is the mobile gear legislation that has come before a home rule from town meeting, I believe. Believe you folks have passed it in that way. And so, I have a long email from my staff that I haven't really read, but we have some follow-up questions for you. So I'm going to turn it over to Dylan. I'm going to read the email, and then we're going to get back to mobile gear. I think, we'll just give a quick, you know, continue our update, and I'm glad to get into questions.
Congratulations on the baby.
Thank you.
Incredible. So I'm Dylan Fernandez, State Rep for Nantucket. Very fortunate to share the island with our wonderful senator, who's here quite often. And so, you know, to echo Julian's comments, there's a few things that the House has taken up this session. We passed Green Works legislation, which is all about coastal resiliency and reducing our carbon footprint. And it's designed to funnel money through local municipalities in order to do that. So the Senate is actually looking, it's looking like it's getting picked up in the Senate. They're revisiting, I just got a news alert on it. So this is something that's likely to, very likely to move forward and get passed into law, but the House already passed this. So this would be funding for municipalities to electrify their vehicle fleets, to hire an energy coordinator. You guys already have one, but perhaps that could be funded through state funding now if this gets passed. Funding for things like microgrids and the like to improve towns' energy efficiency. So, more to come on that, once that gets passed and signed into law. But it looks like if it does, there'll be a lot of opportunities for the town of Nantucket and towns across the state to tap into that state funding, to become more, to reduce our carbon footprint. And then also, there's funding in there for adaptation. So things around coastal resiliency and the like. The other piece Julian alluded to, that I'll talk about, is around housing. So, Nantucket has, for years and years, filed a home rule petition. You know, the one that we love so much, and Nantucket does love its home rule petitions, but this one, I particularly love, that sets a transfer fee of 0.5% on home sales over $2 million. And so, this is something that you guys have sent to the state on multiple occasions. It's almost always, it has always died, and it's died in various forms at the state level. And so, that's in, at least in part because of strong opposition from the Realtors Association. So, you know, this session, instead of just trying to get Nantucket's piece through, I filed statewide enabling legislation for every single municipality across the Commonwealth to do what Nantucket wants to do. Set the threshold at a million, but enabled local municipalities to go higher than that, so you could go to two, or three, or five million. And the, and set the percentage of anywhere between 0.5 and 2%. And set the AMI restriction at 175, which is pretty consistent with what Nantucket wants and what other really high-cost communities want as well. And this is really, I'm really excited to say, this is, this has taken off quite a bit. And so, we have a group of, we started a coalition behind this, and so we have a group of around 50 or 60 housing organizations from all over the state that are very much involved in this. And then we've been working with municipalities and their legislative leaders to get more home rule petitions filed and passed on this. And also, to get legislators involved from communities that have passed similar home rule petitions. Because you guys were the first, you led the entire state on this. And I think you guys should be proud for a lot of your really creative housing ideas that you've come up with on Nantucket. I think municipalities from across the Commonwealth looked at Nantucket in a lot of ways, and they certainly did on this transfer fee piece. And so, now, six or seven communities from across the Commonwealth have filed home rule petitions. You have Julian's neck of the woods, of Truro and Province Town filing. But then, the second actor was Somerville. And now Brookline has filed one, Concord has filed one. And the latest filer, which we're really excited about, is Boston filed a home rule petition on this as well. And so, we've been pushing really hard with legislators, council members on the Boston City Council as well, to enable, to enact this statewide enabling legislation that we are currently iterating on in the House, and the Senate's going to be working on it in a bit as well. So I think, you know, it's really exciting to see how far we've come with this and how many organizations we've brought on. We are going to be taking up housing legislation this year. It's going to be, the baseline is going to be similar to the governor's proposal, which is very zoning-focused and frankly, doesn't meet the need in these really high-cost communities like Nantucket, the Vineyard, the Cape. But also, you know, the Boston, Greater Boston communities and the Pioneer Valley communities that also, you know, they're not nearly at the home prices that you guys are at, but they're in a massive housing crisis. And so, making sure that we can bring as many, as many stakeholders and legislators from across the Commonwealth to support what originally was a Nantucket idea, has been probably the highlight of me of this, of this session. So we're hoping to get this into the housing bill that either goes through the House or the Senate. There's still a ton of work that needs to be done on that, but that's where we're at with that. I guess, since we're in the police station, I'd say that we'd pass hands-free driving legislation. We pass hands-free driving legislation now.
Tuesday, right?
Yeah, so, right now, you're in a grace period. I think next week, you can start getting pulled over for using your cellphone while driving. So, don't do that. Before, you could only, you could, only texting and driving was banned. But of course, like, that was really unenforceable, because you could use other things with your hands on your phone, like your GPS, or make phone calls. Now, all of that will be, will be banned, and you have to get a hands-free system in your car. Most, you know, a lot of the newer model cars have a hands-free system. And for older model cars, the technology is really cheap now to put it in your car. So we didn't look at this as something overly burdensome to low-income people. On the home rule petition front, we've passed seven, we've got seven Nantucket pieces of legislation in the past three years, which, like, that's definitely more than any other municipality in the Commonwealth, probably by a factor of like, you know, two or three. But, you know, it's wonderful. And we got the home rule petition on the gender neutrality piece for, you know, now the select board rather than selectmen, which is a really important piece. And I think it's, I just think it's really cool that, for the first time in Nantucket's history, you have more women serving on the, on the select board in a municipality that has a pretty storied and long history in this Commonwealth. So I think it's, I think, I think that's really cool. And then I think, you know, to match that with the select board name change was, was a really good thing that you guys did and were able to get done as well at the state level. There's a couple other petitions that you guys sent up, one on a water merger that went through many iterations last session, and there's been a lot of back and forth between council at the State House and town council. And because the language needs to be tweaked quite a bit, we're hopeful that that can get done this session. It's really not a massive change you're asking for. It's really just about making sure that the language is exactly correct, so that we're not coming back here in a couple of years to iterate on that as well. There's a housing covenants piece that you sent out, that, that never made it through committee last session, but happy to report that that got reported favorably this session out of the Housing Committee. So, or at least a step forward. And that's experienced more progress than we had last session. So with that, I think, we'll just take some questions, unless you want to add anything. You know, and the money piece, you know, we continue to be very supportive of the shell fishing industry on Nantucket. Around a quarter million dollars in the past three years to support that. We're going to keep supporting off-island transportation, as long as you guys keep requesting that. So around $150,000, I think, all time for off-island transportation, for healthcare services, for the most needy people, to get the care that they need and care that they can't already receive here on island. And just keep us, you know, we have great relationships, and you guys all have our cellphone numbers. But please just keep us in mind with anything that comes up that we can be supportive and helpful on. We are very much here to serve you and to serve the residents of the town. And that goes to anyone in the audience as well. Know that our offices are here for you. And my email is, just Google my name, my email pops right up that I check religiously, unfortunately. And we get back to you almost immediately. So with that, you want to give that update?
On the mobile gear piece, so we're trying to make some progress on this. There's been some initial, I think to make some progress truly in getting this bill further advanced, I think we have to double down on our legal rationale for this. You know, and I think that there was a legal justification that someone named Jeff Carlson had worked on. You know, I think it's a start, but we're likely going to need more from town council to make the justification there. You know, DMF, the Division of Marine Fisheries, is, you know, kind of pushing back on their authority. But I think there is some precedent. If you look at actually some of the negotiations that have happened around the Meskiga Channel and how Edgar Town has sort of pushed their authority, and on a separate, this is related to the Vineyard Wind Project, that could be a model. So we're going to continue to work on this issue, but I think we'll need to sort of double down on the legal justification there. It's one that continues to be on the list. Also, I just want to applaud the select board and thank you folks for pulling together, I understand there's going to be a working group to look at the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund. You all will recall, this is a newly-created fund that was established as part of the short-term remuneration legislation. It's already making a pretty significant impact on Cape Cod. So, all the 15 Cape Cod towns are automatically in. It's raised over $9 million in its first, first five months. It's pretty significant dollars there. And it's projected to continue apace. So I'm just glad the town is sort of looking at it. Dylan and I sort of fought hard, both for Nantucket and then the six towns on Martha's Vineyard, to have the ability to opt into this fund if they want. So I think it, it makes some good sense that you folks are taking a deep dive there. Any assistance you need from either our offices, the Department of Revenue, the Department of Environmental Protection, let us know. It's meant to be a tool to be used at your disposal if you see fit. So I think with that, glad to take any questions. I'm sure there's a myriad of things we left out. Part of the, one of the best parts of this job is you never get bored, because we're always dealing with different issues. You know, we've got more work to do with you folks, particularly on helping get folks get off-island who need psychiatric care. We continue to work on that. There's a myriad of issues that we collaborate with Libby and her staff on. And again, it's just great to have Dylan as a partner and to be here with all of you. So glad to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you. And thank you for fighting for our home rule petitions. Any questions from the board?
Lieutenant Governor Pleato put out $3 million against domestic violence in January, or she announced it. What is the process of that? Does that have to go through lots of different things before it trickles down to the Cape and Islands? How does that work? Was it just in task force mode?
So, so I believe, it's either going to be a grant program, where they announce the grants, or there's going to be like an RFP process where you can apply for them. I don't know the answer, but we'll find out and we'll get it to you. My assumption usually, when they announce funds like that, is either they're saying, hey, there's a grant opportunity, apply for this, or we're announcing the grants of what have they been received by, you know, local health. I think anytime we can get more resources to local health is really critical and important. They do do a whole host of really important work.
And let us know too, if you, so we can get more information on it, but then if you do apply, let us know, so we can reach out and write a letter of support on the town's behalf.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a general question on the housing, you know, home rule that everyone's picking up. Is there any need, are there any lobbyists? I know there'll be lobbyists on the side of real estate and those interests. Are there any lobbyists sort of helping on the other side? Or is that, are you guys the lobbyists for us?
Well, it's, it's quite the organization now. We are always open to more lobbyists on our side. So, so look, you know, you have Mark Drayson, who's a former state representative, who actually was in, was actually in the speaker's class, who's been very helpful in lobbying for us. You have these really large housing organizations and the Metro Area Planning Council that's been a part of this. The MACDC is a part of this. The Boston Tenants Organization, some actually really large organizations. The Institute for Policy Studies is one of our biggest organizations that is doing a deep dive into all the research on exactly how much revenue this would produce for targeted municipalities, based on different meetings with reps we're having. So I can go in and give them a sheet of paper and say, this is exactly how much, you know, your communities and you name the town are going to make from this. And so, look, there's, there's a lot of people involved, and it's taken a ton of work to get them, to bring, to bring everyone in, but we're always looking for more help. I also want to point out that you guys have been really involved and supportive. And Tucker, I see Ken Poe-Grant, you know, have been up at the State House, pushing on Nantucket's behalf on this. And really, also pushing for this to be enacted statewide as well. So you guys have been great partners in this, but, you know, as much help as we can get. Because this is, this is, this would be, this would be, we still have a long road ahead, because this is a really large change. It is something that, that is a new revenue stream. And anytime you're creating something like that, there's going to be a significant amount of opposition. You know, I do think that we have the moral high ground here. When you look at, Nantucket was featured today on my drive to the boat, was listening to a Nantucket story on BUR, about an individual who's paying 90% of their salary to rent. That's insane. And I think unconscionable. And so, if we are imposing a tiny fee on million or multimillion-dollar home sales, people buying their second, maybe third home, right, to pay for workforce housing, so that we have the, you know, the teachers, police officers, you know, bartenders, landscapers, everyone that makes the island run and different communities run, I think that's, that's absolutely the moral thing to do. And so, I think, you know, I think we're on, we're certainly on the right side morally here. And now, we need to just, you know, continue to build the political will to do it.
I also just, I really want to applaud this board and this town. I represent 20 communities in this region. I would argue that housing is the, you know, the immediate crisis we face. We have an existential, longer-term crisis with the climate emergency. No town, you know, no town more than Nantucket, with maybe a slight asterisk to say Province Town close behind, has done more on housing. Most of the communities I represent have their heads in this, in the sand, literally, about the crisis we face, what this means for our community, and the viability of whether or not these are viable places to live. That's being called into question around what's happening and who can live in our communities, and that's tied to housing. And that's happening way sooner than what's happening from a climate perspective. And so I just really want to applaud this board for really the vision you folks have had, for pushing the envelope to the broader, you know, townspeople at town meeting, for the real commitment. There's no town in the state, there's no town in the state that has a steeper problem than Nantucket, but no town has done more. And I think that's really, really something that, that makes the difference. And it's why, you know, you're giving the proposed and the tool, the proposals and the tools and the ideas that you have are being exported, not only elsewhere in my district, but elsewhere in the state. And so I just, you know, as, as someone who comes out of this generation of Cape Codders and Islanders, who are trying to make a life here, who are trying to give back and trying to make this a sustainable place, just thank you for the, for each of your commitment to this. It's making a difference.
Yeah, I was just going to make more of a comment to thank you guys for pushing it forward. I know that Governor Baker has put forward a lot of housing policies, but they're really focused on zoning, and what we really need is a funding source. So this transfer fee is really what we need as our tool in our toolkit. So thank you.
I just had a question, sort of tagging on to the housing. I think 40B legislation has been the fire that we needed to focus on this, but I think in seasonal communities, it's, the relevance, it's sort of outdated. And I'm wondering if there's ever any conversation about a revision or the next iteration of, of something like a 40B, because it served a purpose. But again, both of you coming from seasonal communities, I think where you have the turnover, I just think the 25% affordable housing in some of these projects, it just doesn't really, it just, the numbers don't really work for us. So I'm just wondering if there's ever any discussion, or if that's really considered, it's done.
So there's always discussion, and among, you know, certain folks, there's always a desire to sort of open up and look at 40B. 40B is essentially designed, right, statutorily, to be a tough pill to swallow. I would say actually that 40B has not been, broadly across the Commonwealth, has not been very effective in getting more affordable housing, but it's sort of one of the only tools that we've got to actually finance these projects. I think for Nantucket, you folks are getting so close to getting to your 10%, that this is no longer, you're going to reach safe harbor, my understanding is, very soon, within the next several years. So whereas, the, I'll be honest, there's not an appetite to open up 40B, because we just think it's going to be this whole myriad of issues. And I don't think it's going to be successful. And honestly, I think we need to take other policies that are advancing housing production, that yes, are getting its zoning reform. And that 40B frankly, was designed to be the sort of poison pill that it is, right? And I know there's huge issues with that. And, you know, I filed legislation that tries to look at saying, all right, how do we, how do we look at the state housing index differently? How do we, you know, how do we just have things that fit for seasonal communities? And even, you know, in the bill I filed, which is called an act relative to attainable housing in seasonal communities, 11 ideas that are meant to make a difference for our communities, most of them are pretty non-controversial, right? Ideas about, all right, let's give, you know, if you're a landlord who's renting at affordable rates, you should get a property tax break for that, for the local option. How do we provide more tools for the Department of Housing and Community Development to work with municipalities or school districts in buying housing? How can towns maybe have right of first refusal in foreclosed properties? One of the components in there was actually looking at the state, what's called the SHI list, the State Housing Index List. And basically, that's what counts to sort of your 10%. One of the ideas that is in this bill was about, how do we count covenant housing? Do we give some credits to municipalities, for instance, that are investing in another town's project, right? So Truro giving some CPA funds to a project in Eastham, can that count? And that actually, in a redraft of the bill, that moved out of the Housing Committee, the Housing Committee would not advance the bill with language, any language touching the state housing index. So there is a real pushback in the Housing Committee around doing anything around 40B. I think from Nantucket's, you know, from your perspective, and I know there's a lot of, you know, very legitimate concern around certain 40B projects, I think, I think recent ones here. I think for Nantucket's purposes, you know, you folks just, you know, keep steaming ahead, and you're going to be in safe harbor. But, you know, for the other communities I represent in my hometown, which is 2% affordable housing, I worry, you know, that, the reason why folks don't want to open up 40B is most municipalities are nowhere even near close to their 10%. And so that's why I think there's just such a desire not to open it up. If anything, Nantucket, you folks have been so on the cutting edge of a lot of this stuff, that I think hopefully, this is no longer going to be a factor for you moving forward. But I very much sort of appreciate that, you know, some of these developments that are happening, that are sort of gargantuan in scale, you know, are hiding behind sort of this 25% for affordable housing, when, when really, you know, I'd like to see, you know, a town be able to mandate, all right, you're going to do this, you need to do 35%. You need to do 50%. Allow them to sort of go further. But, but, you know, I think the example from the bill that I told, was, you know, that the bill that I filed was just, there is not a desire among, you know, housing policy folks to open this up, largely because it hasn't really built. Aside from Nantucket and like a handful of other towns, no one is even close to their 10%. Maybe, you know, I don't, I don't know who else is. But I think that's kind of part of the reason why it's like, you know what? We're leaving it alone. But I, but I hear the critique of it. I agree with the critique of it. But yeah, I think in legislation, you got to know where you can push, and you can get some traction, and not. And I think that Dylan and I need to be focused on getting, getting the transfer fee tax passed, either as part of a home rule, or as broader legislation, and a whole list of other pieces that are going to make a difference for you guys.
Thank you. I just have two other quick questions. Wind, there isn't much that we can do until it changes at the federal level. Is that correct?
Well, with wind, oh.
Yeah, with the wind projects.
Yeah. So I, and to piggyback off Julian, I, I talk about 40B when talking about the transfer fee, right? Because transfer fee is very municipality-focused, and it's all about, you know, allowing local communities, Nantucket, to hit its 10%, but on its own terms, in a way that, that meets the community aesthetic and the way that the community wants to do it, without having, you know, to build all these other units. So, so I've actually found it kind of useful and So, so I, I've actually found it kind of useful in talking to legislators to bring up how the transfer fee would let communities hit their, their 10% on their own terms. So wind, there's nothing, there's certainly nothing good to report here. You know, I think, what? Okay. So there's certainly nothing good to report here. You know, frankly, as long as Donald Trump is President of the United States, I think there is going to be continued holdup to this $2 billion project. You know, that's been clear since everything, so the, the previous secretary, Secretary Zinke was very much pro offshore wind development. He made glowing comments about offshore wind development and everything was running really smoothly until the president, well, until he ran into all these ethics issues. And then the president appointed Secretary Bernhardt to replace him, who I believe his background is in the, the kind of oil and gas and fossil fuel industry. And since that transition, you've seen the president make a lot of just crazy, frankly, comments about offshore wind and wind in general. So those are all very YouTube-able. I won't get into, get into them. But it's my sense that, you know, they're holding this up because of an envi, for an, because of an enviable, environmental impact study where the same year they green lighted seismic blasting for, for oil exploration and along the, the Atlantic coast. So there's no, that's not the reason, right? Clearly. And, and frankly, you know, elections have consequences. And I think as long as that president remains in the White House, there's going to be some excuse on top of another excuse to hold up clean energy production. This is, this is terrible for, you know, terrible for us hitting our clean energy goals. The Commonwealth needs offshore wind in order to hit our clean energy goals, especially with Pilgrim Power Plant coming offline. And this is also really, you know, a terrible situation for economic investment in clean energy. I mean, there, this is a project, a $2 billion project. There are jobs projected in our, in our district here. And there, there's actually projects underway right now to build facilities on the Vineyard and, and across the district to, to support this project. So that is kind of, you know, I don't know that there's anything on the state level that, that can be done. We have conversations with our federal delegation on this. And Senator Markey, Senator Warren, Representative Keating have all been very vocal in trying to get them to have, you know, really, really trying to get them to have the same environmental guidance for offshore wind projects that they just have in oil and natural gas projects on the coast. For some reason, they scrutinize clean energy more from an environmental perspective than they do dirty energy. It's, it's, it's quite backwards, but frankly, I think as long as Trump's president, that's, that's going to be the status quo.
The, the sole bright spot is in, in the latest procurement that's come on with the Mayflower Wind. The project's coming in at about, I think it's $5.37 a kilowatt hour. It's like, like even lower than Vineyard Wind. So, so the market is responding to this. You know, this is going to happen. This is going to be a game changer for the Commonwealth, getting to net zero carbon emissions. And it's just a matter of, you know, how long does this failed administration remain in office? Most reasonable people I expect are hoping that it's not long.
Thank you. Any other questions? No, we're good. Thank you both for the update. Really appreciate it. Thanks. Take care.